I'm Randy Bragg from Carpenter Associates and I'm here this evening representing South Street Development. I'm also here with the owner, Mr. Chuck Lawrence, for when you have some questions. We are here this evening seeking your positive recommendation to the council for a zone change for a property at the corner of Fourteenth and Union Street. This property now is used as a small convenience store and gas station. We propose to expand that space by using the neighboring properties. One of the properties along Fourteenth Street will be demolished in lieu of some parking and buffering. And the other two along Francis will be hopefully reserved and utilized for housing for potential employees. The proposal is to put a C-store there, a TradeWinds C-store there of about sixty by eight feet. We propose to leave the gas and the canopy in the present location. Pretty straightforward. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions? You want to get up and speak into the mic, please?
Could you tell me what hours would be for this store?
Maybe I can ask Chuck himself to answer those questions.
We're on the air. We need to get the discussion into the microphone, folks.
Okay, thank you. He said the hours would be from six AM to nine PM. Is that correct, sir? All right. Who else would be in the store besides the TradeWinds store? Nothing else. So it would be no additional persons there? Okay. If I might ask, what makes you think that you would have any business later than, say, six or seven PM?
I think, you know, based on the traffic studies and things, and most of my stores, and if we don't have the traffic, you know, I close stores at eight o'clock off-season. But most of my stores are around Bangor. I don't have anything in Bangor.
Okay, all right.
So it'd be based on the needs.
All right, thank you. Chairman Dergan, if you don't mind, I'd like to address the...
Yes. Are you speaking in favor of this?
I'm speaking against it.
All right, let me, we're taking favorable comments right now. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this action? All right, those opposed, come forward and introduce yourself again.
I'm Dr. John Farquhar. I live at Fourteenth Francis Street, which is right across from where this proposal is being made. We were a little bit surprised that we weren't notified about tonight's meeting. Apparently, the notices only went to people who are directly attached to this proposal. This, however, I think makes us quite aware that our entire neighborhood might have some concerns about this. There are other members of the neighborhood here right now. Mr. and Mrs. Newhall are here. And Mr. Moscow is here. The only people that aren't here from the immediate area that's involved are the people who live directly next to it. Mr. and Mrs. Burke. Mr. Burke is ninety-three years old. He's a former Bangor firefighter. And their property would be, I think, the most affected of all of this. Many of the concerns that we have are about traffic. When the Rite Aid was opened after we dealt with a very limited-use dairy that was still in that location, the traffic has increased. There's no question about that. Furthermore, a number of people use Francis Street as a detour when they don't want to deal with the traffic light at Fourteenth and Union Streets. Frequently, they go fast down the street. I've had to yell at a few people on a number of occasions. And Francis Street is a very narrow street. It has frequent use by walkers, by people who are elderly or disabled, and children who are heading to two schools that are each less than a half a mile from the proposed location. There are assisted-living clients at a home on Union Street and Manners Avenue. Frequently, we see people with walkers and wheelchairs coming down from that location. The Amicus Care Facility up Thirteenth Street frequents Francis Street also as a, with a group of their clients who are either walking or in wheelchairs. The residents of Francis Street are nearly all senior citizens. The Burkes, as I mentioned, are in their nineties. Mr. Newhall over here is ninety, and the rest of us are sixty-five and older. I'm seventy-three myself. We, do you want to continue?
My wife Catherine will continue with the comments here.
Good evening. Good evening. I hope you can hear me. My main concern is, well, I have many concerns, but I think that the residents of Manners and Avenue and Francis Street, this is our neighborhood. We are residential. We are not residential/commercial. And we've lived in our home, John and I've lived in our home thirty-two years. And we might not be fancy, but it's quiet, and our neighbors are like friends. I see an increase in crime. I've seen an increase in crime in the past five years. Our home, we had a home invasion in two thousand. The detective that we worked with, a lot of homes on Manners and Francis were robbed as the Rite Aid was also robbed at gunpoint four times. I only see a late-night store adding to just crime. And the detective that we worked with on our home invasion told us that, you know, we wondered, why our neighborhood? Why should we be robbed? We're a modest neighborhood. But however, Hammond Street and Union Street are main arteries that lead right into where we live. And this would include the proposed TradeWinds store. There are a lot of problems with crime and loitering. There haven't been lately. We have police patrols. We have one police car that is right there by the church on Union and Manners. He's there all the time because people speed. We have drug dealers in the neighborhood. I also think that, I'm not clear as to why TradeWinds would come in and almost duplicate the services of Rite Aid. Now, I know there would be a few more options with TradeWinds, but not enough to convince me that this is an establishment. And I'm speaking for the neighbors of Manners who couldn't be here tonight. But we are totally against this proposal. And that's all.
Thank you. Any other comments in opposition to this proposal?
Hi, my name is Jeff Stroud. I'm a Manners Avenue resident, been so since nineteen seventy-six. And I too have seen what the Farquharers have seen and also have been a victim of home invasion, robbery, theft, et cetera. There's nothing more awakening than to have a police dog walking up your driveway with a fully outfitted SWAT police officer to make your day. But anyway, my concern is not so much the business as it is the traffic and the promises that the city makes to its residents. I've watched Five Twenty Eight Union, the trailer park, go from a wreck in a non-complying zone, R1 surrounded zone, to amounts to a Gulag with trailers lined up in straight lines under the guise of urban renewal. I've watched encroachment in the last thirty, forty years, including covering this body in the mid-eighties. And my concerns are promises made, promises ignored. I think the city has an obligation to its residents that if you live in an R1 zone, that you should be protected. It used to be R1. I don't know what to call it now. But the highest single-family residence designation that you want to give it is sacred to me. It's a single-family residence. It should be protected from commercial encroachment. I see it happening all over the city, and yes, it is progress. Yes, it is. It is what happens. We can only hope that somewhere, someone sees a little break to put on and protect those of us who live in small, little neighborhoods from commercial encroachment. I don't see anything in this proposal that you have here that really buffers anything from a highly concentrated commercial development to a single-family residence. There's nothing there. You go from single to commercial. There's no buffer. There's no step-down. It used to be in the ordinances that the word "step-down", you had a means of protecting your residential zone. Maybe you went through an R3, or an R2, and then an R1. But we're going from a commercial zone into a single-family residence zone, and it's, I just don't see it as good planning. I'm sorry. I'm also concerned if traffic increased through our neighborhood. I live on Manners and Corner Russell where there's a stop sign that's painted with invisible paint because no one uses it, no one stops there, and no one slows down, basically, because they're in a hurry to get through the neighborhood to go over to Thirteenth or through to go to Fourteenth and avoid, as you said, the lights. Bit of an annoyance, but hey, we can live with that. I would just like to ring a bell and say, hey, we're here as single-family residences, and we'd like a little bit of protection somewhere down the line. I ain't going to be around that much longer. We all aren't. But it would be nice to know that while you're here, the city's going to look out for our best interest as homeowners and sort of do a little step-down, do a little protection for us and for those of us who enjoy living here. I truly like Bangor. I really do. And I hope to continue living here until we're all in the horizontal chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this proposal?
John Everett. I'm at Five Forty Union Street, abutting the proposed development.
I'm sorry, the name again?
John Everett. I have a question first. The proposal says that the two houses on Francis Street are intended to house employees of the store.
Excuse me, John, could you talk to the microphone so everyone at home can hear you?
Sure, yeah. The proposal says that the two houses on Francis Street are intended to house employees of the store. But they have the option in the contract to turn that into parking. Can you explain that?
I'm sure. The intent there is to maintain the two residences along Francis Street. We feel that that's going to give more of a neighborhood natural buffer. Mr. Lawrence, in the past, has had a model where he tries to construct apartments, affordable housing for his employees nearby his establishments, folks that may work for him. The intent right now is not to remove those two homes on Francis Street and maintain those. Again, we, hopefully, once we get approval, we would have to go through a site plan process. We're not sure of all the restrictions that we might run into there. But certainly, the intent there is to reconstruct a very similar establishment to what's there currently. During the site plan approval, we're going to be required to address traffic. We're going to need to improve the poor traffic in and out and improve the safety in and out of that store currently. Currently has basically an entire curb cut around the entire corner. If you're familiar with Chuck's Project and Brewer, the old, currently a Valero. Not sorts of Valero anymore. We intended, we enclosed off the entire corner, made it very safe. We restricted access in and out versus having two hundred feet worth of frontage directly to the main avenue, making it much safer. This will allow us to also include sidewalks along that entire stretch, making it, again, safer, better access, much cleaner. So the intent is to maintain the residences. There's no intent to take them down. No need to take them down currently.
Let me just ask while you're up, does this contemplate having access from both Fourteenth Street and Union Street, the way it is now? So there's no change in the access?
Other than it would be narrowed.
It would be narrower?
Right. Currently, the openings are, I don't know the exact numbers, probably around a hundred feet on both Fourteenth and Union. So they become more like twenty-four, twenty-four. I don't know until we get through the site plan approval.
Can I follow up on my original question first? So I think you just reiterated that you intend to have employees live in those two houses. So why then do you need a zoning change on those two lots?
I've studied that facility quite a bit, and I think it's a safety issue now. There's zero parking. There's wide-open egress right now. I think it's a real issue. What I would intend to do is to set the store backaways, creating less congestion, more parking, to fence behind the store, using those two houses as a buffer, as Randy mentioned, to have management staff in there that would be well-behaved and all of that. The one on Union Street would be, again, would be more parking, the house on Union Street. Again, I have situations where I've gone into markets where there's been resistance. In a situation in Hamden where the town required a two-hundred-foot buffer, and a lady still had a concern with that two-hundred-foot buffer that was all trees. So I pretty much gave that land to her to make her comfortable, but I had no desire to develop that. So, you know, she paid a thousand dollars. I paid two thousand dollars to transfer the land to her. That's what I want to do. I want to be a good community citizen. I would not come in and try to affect your life. I will do whatever. If there's riot, there's rough crowds at night, then I'll close at seven, eight o'clock. I'll do whatever is right for the community. I want to offer a better service. That store does not meet the community's needs right now. It needs a deli. It needs some quality takeout. That was my intent.
I'll just finish and let other people talk. I share the general concerns of the people who've spoken before me. I have some other more specific concerns, but they may be more appropriate for the site plan process should you choose to approve this. So I'll just let that go.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
It's my understanding that you purchased the house, the two houses that you're talking about?
Yes, I have.
My, that was quick.
Well, again, I need employee housing anyhow.
We were not notified of this until two days ago. Why is that, sir?
What do you mean that?
We were not notified of this meeting, or?
There was a letter that was sent out. I didn't, I'm not responsible for notifying the butters. I mean, there was something that, you know, we put in a request to discuss.
I understand.
There was a meeting scheduled two weeks ago that got snowed out, you know?
Okay, I understand that. And I know that you may have good intent here, but you cannot keep, I mean, a larger parking lot means more cars. That means more pollution, more noise. You know, this is what we're concerned about, or at least my husband and I are. Just the general feeling of our neighborhood will go. That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this subject? Yeah, the mic, please.
Hi, my name is Ross Moxo. I'm a resident on Francis Street, Nine Francis. I just have one question. The property that's, if you're headed from, on Union Street, from the airport to downtown, the property adjacent to you on your right, that's the property that you're looking to demolish, correct?
Yes.
Okay. My question is, do you have any, will there be a drive-through at your location?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, do you have any intent to have that location be a drive-through that would exit onto Francis Street?
No, absolutely not.
So someone would not be able to?
It would be just for parking, and again, there would be landscaping, and there would be a fence that gives a buffer, and whatever else the neighbor needs.
Okay, but I'm... Right now, as she mentioned, we do have a problem that people that want to avert the light at Union. If they're coming in from downtown, they'll make a left on Manners, a right on Francis, and empty out onto Fourteenth so they can get around the light. And the same thing, if somebody's on Union and they're heading towards Hammond down Fourteenth to avoid that light on Union, they'll just make the left on Manners and cross down our street. I guess my concern is, you're saying that there is no intent to have the property on Fourteenth have continual access onto Francis that then would provide another avenue for diversion if someone that doesn't want to sit at that light can just go through your facility onto our street? Okay.
We're not changing anything that doesn't exist right now, as far as...
Well, it doesn't exist. I'm just saying, well...
As far as egress and all.
So the properties to the right, I think it's Zero Fifty-Five, and the one that you purchased on Francis, those will not have connecting access, one to the other? Okay.
There would be a fence around the whole three sides, the three sides, or the two sides, of the back and the left, so there'll be no opportunity to...
No, okay, if you have a fence along the left of the house that you're going to demolish, and a fence in the rear of your property, that provides the opportunity to create a driveway from Union, emptying out onto Francis, within the boundaries of the fence?
There would be landscaping or whatever that would prevent that. There will not be a drive-through. If that's what you meant by drive-through, I thought you were talking about service drive-through.
No, no, just access that, you know, someone wants to access a facility from Union and they decide they want to empty out on exit on Francis versus going back out and having to wait for the traffic on Union?
No, that wouldn't be...
Not from Francis, no. Okay, all right.
It might be, if we think about it, simply by taking the existing rear property line of the properties along Francis Street and just pulling it towards Francis Street, twenty or thirty feet-ish, I got a map that can show that, but we're not looking to do access from Fourteenth through to Francis or from Union Street through to Francis at all.
How would that be blocked off on your property? It's the same, at that point, it's the same lot. If you place a fence on the left of that Zero Fifty-Five lot and then a fence in the rear of your property, how would you divide someone, not someone deciding to go into your facility, and then, let's say they're heading towards Hammond? Well, why would they wait during the day for traffic for three minutes to make a left and then hit a light versus just going out on Francis and Fourteenth to Hammond?
Again, we'll make sure that there's proper blockage. The fence is not intended to create a path. The fence is intended to be, you know, a nice privacy fence.
Right, I understand it, the boundaries to your property. I'm saying within that fence. You're saying that you're not going to be able to have access from Union to Francis?
No.
Okay, all right, good. And the only other thing is, I'm not that familiar, you do have a good reputation with your properties. I did some research. The only thing I'm not aware of, I mean, how are your deliveries handled? That's a very small, quiet street. I live three houses down. I'm going to be one house down from the buffer, from the second house that you purchased. I have one house and then mine. Are you gonna, I mean, do you have deliveries at three o'clock in the morning? Because an eighteen-wheeler will backfire.
No, we do not. We don't have anyone in the store until five-thirty in the morning. And then deliveries in a small store like that normally are through the front of the store, which would not affect the neighbors. And the deliveries are happening now. They may be a little bigger deliveries, but everything, everything other than a nice deli and a new facility is already existing. And again, I promise that I'm going to do everything I can do to make sure that it's better than it is, not creating it worse.
Are there any, are there any plans, I don't mean to interrupt, are there any plans in five years? I don't even know if you have the space to stick a car wash?
You don't have, you don't have, you don't have any space. I mean, what you have right now is not sufficient space-wise to do a nice facility. A little bit more land would allow me to go a little bit deeper, a little bit wider, but not encroach on neighborhoods and things. And again, with fences and things, it's not going to be twenty-four hours. I'm twenty-four hours down on Union Street at my own car wash. I didn't put cash acceptors or anything because I don't want twenty-four hours. Because again, I respect the neighborhood.
So that will not have the cash acceptance?
No, it will not. No, it will not. It's totally, totally different than my Union Street. I mean, I believe they need that near the airport and all, but I don't believe this facility needs that.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the subject? Come forward to the mic, please.
My name is George Newhall. I live on the corner of Francis and Manners. I'm ninety years old, and I've lived there for over sixty years. This pleasant residential neighborhood has been that way forever. The corner of Union and Fourteenth Street has always been a business area. Grounds dairy, a gas station, two in a bank. That's not a problem. But what I visualize from what I hear today is this could expand to destroying the general neighborhood. They own the property. Down the road, they could do anything they wanted to, expand it to whatever they want to. If they were on the corner, had their store, and made the space they need on the corner, that would be fine. But my concern is, they have already indicated that they have taken property both on Union Street and Francis Street. And down the road somewhere, they could do anything they want to with it. They may say anything they want to right here, but that's a possibility. I visualize that it's a problem. If that was their store on that corner where it is, with adequate space for their building on that corner without expanding any further, that might be fine. But that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I would just like to add, I probably did a poor job in the introduction, but we are requesting for a contract zone change here, and we have placed restrictions on the amount of expansion that can happen in that location. So for the homes that we hope to keep there, we are putting a restriction on there that they will not be increased. We've left ourselves open to help maintain those, and in such doing so, we would not expand those. We could make them a little smaller, but the intent is not to increase the size of the store beyond this proposal.
Just one more question. The two houses that you purchased on Francis Street...
Would you address it on the microphone, please?
The two properties that you purchased on Francis Street, that basically is half the street. Do those lots remain as residential, or are they going to be changed to commercial? The houses, not the store.
You're proposing that the lots are changed to commercial, correct, Randy?
Do you ask? And I may look for a little assistance from maybe Dave here, but the intent was fully to leave those residential. But because we were encroaching on the property of those existing boundaries, we went over the property line, if you will, to do our improvements. But the intent is to keep the residences there.
No, okay, your intent is to keep them there. My question is, the lots that you purchased, are those, will those be considered, if this gets approved, will they be considered commercial or residential? I mean, could you tear those houses down and expand the business in two years? No, yes or no?
I'm not sure. I don't know.
Who would know that?
I guess I probably did a poor job, you know, laying this out. The only reason we asked for tearing the buildings down in lieu of a parking lot, we don't need the parking lot to do the project.
No, but you're going halfway down the street, sir.
Sure.
This is not a parking lot. This is your store, a house... This is your store, a house, a vacant lot right now, third house that you purchased. That's halfway down our street. Our street, it's a very small street. There's only seven houses on the street.
So, the intent, the, the way it's written right now, please, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, is going to be changed to USD.
Is that commercial?
Service district.
I'm not, I'm not...
Urban Service District.
Is that considered?
But the restriction we've placed on leaving the residences there.
Is that considered?
I don't know if that's a restriction or that's double negative, but I, I didn't know how else to get my intent across.
Is there anybody here that can tell me if that is considered commercial?
Yeah, I think it's commercial.
Could someone in two years decide they want to demolish the two houses, take the lot in between, and, and develop the business?
I don't want to get ahead of the process. The condition that they've offered is, they'll have houses or they'll have a parking lot, which means either choice is what can happen.
No, because I've been hearing that, well, we hope to keep and we hope, but...
It, it, it does not say that.
No, tonight, yeah.
There, there's a contract conditions that go with the rezoning, and it doesn't say the houses stay.
Okay. I just received a one-page letter that if my neighbor had not knocked on my door and showed me that 16-page document, the one-page letter that I got, received, doesn't mean anything. And, and I mean, yet my, my property is not abutting, but it's only one house over from the last house that they purchased. Now, he may have the best intents in the world, but in two years, they decide, well, you know, we don't need the housing for our employees. They demolish House 1 and 2 on Francis with the lot in between, that just about doubles the size of the commercial establishment in that neighborhood. And that is a small residential neighborhood. It's a small, at the end of the street, you have an assisted facility, living facility, you have a church, you have the Montessori school across, and then you have the children that walk down to the 14th Street School, and the elderly people that walk down our street to go to the Rite Aid. That, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Counselor Graham?
Good evening, thank you. I'm Jabron Graham, I'm with the Bangor City Council. Not speaking as the whole council, but I'm speaking as my own. First, I want to say, I've been to many of Trade Winds, and I think you have a nice product. I've been, enjoyed usually how clean it is and how available the variety of different things that are inside. But that leads me to think about all the Trade Winds I've been in and try to imagine what a Trade Winds looks like in this location. I don't really, I didn't see the, the plan, but I've, I've got some questions. The first is, you talk about the ability to build a larger facility, which I got to imagine that it's going to be much larger than the current building's footprint, because, especially if you're expecting more deliveries, you need more space to put said deliveries in. And that just seems to be a much, again, a much larger establishment than I think the entire neighborhood is used to. Are you going to be having the same amount of gas pumps at that location?
Yes, the existing gas would remain the same.
So, that will not be increasing? Okay. And the, the advantage, obviously, to being in that location and creating, buying more property around it and having the ability to draw more people in by having more parking, we've got, you know, just recently, we had some changes made up by the, the interstate, I think for the better, although it was pretty sufferable as we had to go through it all for a few years. But that has also allowed, you know, better ease of access for locations such as this one to be able to bring in more customers as well. However, it just, it strikes me how odd it is that, you know, obviously, the neighborhood itself seems to be coming out and saying that we don't want this here. And I got to imagine that that's got to be very hard because, you know, you want that support, you want that neighborhood to embrace, you know, a business in the neighborhood. And I guess that is why I'm wondering what the need is in that neighborhood. You, you said that the area needs a, a deli, and it needs, you know, certain, certain amenities, and I find that kind of odd because just down the road, at the other end of the street, we've got a couple such establishments already. And I don't understand why there is such a need to break up this neighborhood to accommodate a larger business that's not looking to serve that neighborhood, it's looking to serve other people coming into that area, which is going to be a magnet. It's going to be a magnet for more cars, it's going to be a magnet for more traffic. There isn't just one cut, curb cut on Union Street, there are two. There's an exit and an entrance, and then, of course, the curb cut on 14th Street. So, you talk about making those narrower, but I'm not sure how much narrower you can make those in order to accommodate the amount of cars that you're hoping will fill the parking lot that you wish to have there. And I'm also concerned about this idea of purchasing the, the property and, the property of the houses and having, I guess, the residences for your employees. To me, that sounds like you're not looking to employ the people that are already living here, but you're looking to employ people who are not living here. And I, I just, it'd be great if there was a business looking to go into this location and looking to, you know, create jobs for people that are here and that need jobs, rather than create some, very, to me, I think it's a very odd situation to, you know, be renting onsite to the same employees that you are having your employee, but that doesn't add to the neighborhood either. So, I just, I, I have a real tendency to feel for the residences that are, that are here and, and really kind of, you know, speaking out about this, because I think that it does drastically affect the entire neighborhood, affects the way of life, and it is going to make the situation at that corner even just, not even just a tiny bit crazier, but I think a lot crazier. And I would hate to see those residences, those, you know, residents, you know, feel like they have been encroached upon in such a way that they don't even want to be in that neighborhood anymore. It seems like they've had some hardships with some of the other development there. But I, I can't imagine having to endure anymore. There should be more, we should be looking to try and strengthen that neighborhood rather than try to destroy it further. Now, I'm not saying that the business wouldn't be viable at all and that it couldn't flourish in that location. I think that, I think that it is. You've obviously done your, your due diligence in figuring out, you know, where can I put another Trade Winds that is going to make us money? But I think that this location is just going to, just going to push the residents away, and I think you're going to have even more uproar about it from the people in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the board wish to speak on this? Yes?
It seems like there's two things that are going on here. Like, is this a package deal, both or neither?
Not sure I understand your question.
So, there's a proposed changed, like, right around the immediate lot to Urban Service District?
Correct?
And then, there's a secondary one, which is where the houses are right now. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's the part of the, the rezoning that has specific conditions attached to it.
Right, so, are, do those have to be considered as one unit that we're looking at?
I mean, it's, it's one application, the whole, it all goes together, yes.
So, all or nothing?
Essentially, yes. You, you, at this point in the process, as we said with the last one, you can't alter the conditions of the contract. It is what it is. And, and that's how, how it's laid out. So, there's now, there's about 10,000 square feet of USD. In the end, there'd be 30,000 square feet of USD. There's the theory that some of it, the houses might stay, or they might become a parking lot. All you can be guaranteed on is the, the most limitation and, it may not even be them. If the zone change changes, it's adopted, it can be another entity two years from now, six months from now. He's not required to stay there or own it. It can be somebody else that doesn't have the same intentions, and what they're allowed to do under the contract is what they're allowed to do. So, there might be accesses on Francis. There might be parking lots all along Francis. That's what they applied for. That's what's in front of you.
Other questions from the board? Yes.
Sir, I, I didn't see the proposed size of the store. Is that, is that in the documents?
60 by 80.
60 by 80, so 4,800 square feet, so it's going to be about three times bigger than what you had there now, is that, something like that?
About 80.
Give or take? Oh, okay, so a couple times. I worked, I worked at that gas station on that corner. I believe our hours back then were like 6 to 10. Grant's Dairy was operating at the time across the street. I guess I really don't see it as a significant increase in traffic, but thanks for the, thanks for answering.
Yes. Yes. David, are you ready to give us a...
I'll, I'll go over what I said to you already.
Alright.
Essentially, because I don't have anything specifically new to offer you. The request is for a rezoning at this property, which essentially now it's on a 10,000-square-foot lot, two old Bangor city lots of 5,000 square feet where the little Tom T store is. And in, in the early 90s, they went to the Board of Appeals and got a number of variances to provide the parking and the other stuff in that tight amount area. The proposal proposes to rezone 30,000 square feet of land. Some of it suggests that, well, we could save the houses there, or we could turn it into parking. So, you don't really have an assurance that the houses will stay, but it will be potentially parking there. As I pointed out before, you have to go back to the 1979 land use plan to actually see the four corners as commercial. And at that time, there was this monstrous Grant's Dairy, which made a lot of noise early in the morning, and when Grant's Dairy finally decided to vacate to an industrial park, we were left with that big old dinosaur building and what to do with it. I wasn't with the city at the time, but they came up with a contract zone change to allow Rite Aid to go in the facility and deal with some issues about, about traffic and buffers around that. And what you see is what we ended up with. The question comes is, relative to this rezoning and a contract zoning, have they provided enough protection for the neighbors? Have they done enough to tell you specifically where traffic can come and can't go in terms of Francis or 14th Street or Union Street? And there, there isn't any language in the contract about that, about whether the housing actually will stay, or could it be torn down and made into a parking lot? Well, it kind of says both can happen. So, I don't think you can rest with assurance, if we approve this, the houses will stay, because the contract doesn't say that. You talk about hours of operation. There's nothing in the contract that limits the hours of operation. So, whatever hours could operate in the district could operate there, and it may not be Trade Winds. It might be another USD district. It might be Dunkin' Donuts. We don't know what future owner might, but the contract deals with the property and the zoning that applies to it. And that's what the board needs to make a recommendation to the city council. Does this contract rezoning sufficient, or is it not sufficient? Do you recommend it, or do you not recommend it? And as, as was pointed out before, we sort of leave that decision to you.
Thank you. Any other member of the board wish to speak? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that we approve, contract zone change?
Do I hear a second? No second? Then the motion is, is dead. Sorry to say, we won't have a chance to vote on this because the motion doesn't carry. And this is a report that we will send to the city council.
I think you can follow up with another recommendation if you'd like. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be yes and no vote. You, you can recommend that they not adopt it.
That's true. Does anyone wish to make that motion?
Okay, so I recommend that the, that we not adopt this contract zone change as proposed.
Do I hear a second? Moved and seconded, discussion on the motion. Right. You understand the motion? All of us in favor signify by raising a right hand? Opposed? It's a vote. So, we'll be recommending to the city council that this zone change not be approved.